incorporate a variation to reduce the west corner setback for an existing building from thirty feet to approximately one foot due to the roadway, uh, right away. And a variation to reduce the front yard setback for a new company sign from fifteen feet to approximately ten feet. And there's also a request, additional request for, uh, a setback that's been published. And we will probably attend to that at the next hearing. Prior to starting, I'll say that we have five members here and I think two are, uh, one by phone and one on the Zoom. The Attorney General has allowed these meetings to go on with Zoom as long as there is a quorum. What we've been doing is trying to limit these with uh, COVID and everything else to an hour or right around there. It doesn't appear to be a problem anyways, but we can't finish tonight. So I'll read in the rest of the stuff for the record. Uh, the property is located at twenty-five West Three Eighty East Chicago Avenue in Naperville. It's approximately one point one seven acres. It's on Wellin Septic. The original zoning request was published in the Daily Herald on September seventh, twenty twenty-one. The additional comments, building department, no comments. Do Dat has objections and they've attached two documents. Health Department has no objections with the concept. But additional information may be required. Stormwater has objections. At Public Works, um, they say have no jurisdiction. The external city of Naperville, no comments received. Village of Lyle, they have no jurisdiction in this, uh, matter. Saint, uh, Lyle Township says no comments. Or which I guess no comments received. The Lyle Township Highway Department sent in a letter. Naperville Fire District and the School District Two O Three have no comments. The Forest Preserve states that staff has reviewed the information provided in this notice. And due to the sizable distance from the subject property and the district property, they have no specific comments. Uh, having said that, are you representing the party, the party tonight, sir?
No, the petitioner, I believe it's down there. I, I represent the current owner of the property, the seller.
Okay. Petitioners here, are you going to have any witnesses tonight? Who's the petitioner? Maybe I'm looking at the wrong person. All right, all right. You're the petitioner, are you going to have any witnesses tonight? Okay. Then why don't you raise your right hand and be sworn in? Alain, come on.
Please, Mr. President, uh, I'm the engineer. I will present.
Well, let's clear this up. You're the petitioner, it's your job to put this on the table. You've told me you have no witnesses and your engineer wants to speak. Do you want to convene for a minute and figure out what you're doing? It's your burden to go ahead. Well, then those are witnesses.
I, I apologize, sir.
All right, who are the two witnesses?
I'm the engineer.
I'm the official manager.
All right. We'll swear in the three parties.
Okay, would you raise your right hands, please? We just have this word from the testimony about to give it this clause now here in the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So I'll be back.
All right, let's start with the exhibits. Do you have a site plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we will mark that as exhibit one. Where is, which one is that?
This will be the site plan specifically.
Okay, why don't you mark that as, uh, the, uh, exhibit one, petitioner's exhibit one? Somebody mark, okay. We'll, we'll have our copy to mark that so when people, you're talking, refer to that. You have a survey?
That will be here.
All right, that'll be petitioner's exhibit two. And what is the date on that survey?
The date of the survey is August twenty-sixth, as signed off by me on the survey.
August twenty-sixth of this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's good. All right. Those two will be received and put into evidence. You're the petitioner, why don't you put on your case?
Thank you, members. Uh, my name is Jiu Wang Lin. It's spelled as J-I-U-N-G-U-A-N-G. Last name Lin, L-I-N. I'm with Bridge Line Consultants located at one six six one O-Cup Road, A-U-C-U-P-T Road in Montgomery, Illinois six zero five three eight. And I'm the project, so there in project engineer for this project. And, uh, I will be the first presenter talking about the brick and mortar part of the project such as the zoning, uh, stormwater management, grading, utility connections, and also the lighting, touch on lighting, and also touch on the, the, the four zoning reliefs.
Let me do two things, let me clarify one thing. The owner of the property is Barbara Skyer, Skyer?
Sprig.
Sprig. Is this a, have you, has Kids World bought this property? Is this a contingent sale?
It's a, it's a contingent sale.
Okay. Second of all, I think it would be who the parties, rather than get into your testimony first, why not prove up the elements necessary to get a conditional use of the variation?
Absolutely, I can do that.
Okay.
Okay, um, thank you. So like Mr. Chair stated, there are actually four reliefs that we're seeking, even though on the staff report, there's only three. So we're hoping that we're allowed to proceed with the presentation. And as for the publication of the missing one.
The, the, the missing one has been published, but there's not enough time between publication and tonight. So we won't proceed on that. I don't think you'll finish yours tonight. If you finish it and we finish public comments, then you'll have to come back and finish the second part of yours.
I understand. So, uh, the first, so we're on the staff report, we're, we're asking for the three reliefs. Number one is a conditional use for kids daycare center. Uh, we understand this is our core zoning and the kids, uh, daycare center will be their conditional use. The reason we're seeking, we feel this is fitting to put the, uh, daycare relief, uh, daycare center on this property is uh, that the existing business is, uh, occupied, that property is a, is, is a CPA office. So we're still keeping the existing business used on same property. And we also, and then based on the site plan, we're showing the new, under the proposed condition, that proposed building will have, they adequate, more than adequate building setbacks on all sides, from the, you know, on all sides of the building. Uh, way above and beyond the requirement from DuPage County. Additionally, the business, the proposed business will be in operation between six thirty AM and six PM during the weekdays, uh, not in the weekend. Therefore, based on that, we believe the improvements will be harming with existing layers in the neighborhoods and not causing adverse impact to the neighbors. The second relief that we're seeking is a variation to reduce the west corner side yard setback from thirty feet to approximately one foot due to the road right away. Um, allow me elaborate the situation here. What, what, what you, what you guys see, you know, exhibit two, which is the topography of our survey prepared by the office.
Let me interrupt you for a minute. Janice, can, can you, and Bob, can you hear him or if you want, I guess. You have to take your mask off.
I can, oh, I can hear him, but I, it's difficult to understand.
All right, if you're comfortable taking your mask off to speak, that's fine. If you're not, then do me the honors.
Oh, without question.
Okay.
Um, so on the survey, you see the property includes parcel one on the east and parcel two on the west. The area that's bounded by the black thick lines, those are the property. My future, my climbing homes, based on the deed, based on the title of the property. However, though, uh, there has been confusion in regard with whether there is a fifty feet right away that runs north and south starting on the western property line of this property out along.
Okay, you can, you can take the mic out because we, we're recording this so I should be able to hear.
Right, the fifteen feet in question, strip of land, the land question is here. Uh, we firmly believe we have the land. However, we did reach out, you know, for the intelligence purpose, we did reach out to Mr. Ed Young, who is the roadway commissioner of High, uh, Lyle Township, who insists that they do have ownership, they do have a right of way there. Even though we asked him to provide the documents, uh, proof that he has the ownership. And he, 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 he was too busy to come up with, to look into his archive. So at this point, we don't have the documentation from him demonstrating that there is a public right of way owned by, uh, Lyle Township. But knowing, you know, assuming the village, uh, the township does have the, does have the right of way, we, we approached Mr. Ed Young and we had multiple conversation. And we just recently secured a letter from Mr. Ed Young. Uh, and I, I would like to read this real quick. So I, I understand this was included.
It was included in this part of the record. And I, I guess the intent of the letter is to show you that it's their intention to eventually vacate that. That, it's a perfect place for me to give you two points here. If he's going to vacate it, then it kind of puts your request for a variation, makes it moot. But if it's not vacated and you want to proceed, you're going to have to prove up the elements of a variation. And then the concern becomes if the variation is granted, it runs with the land. And if you then, if they vacate, if they give up their, if they vacate that right away to you, you have a variance that in essence would not be necessary. So with that in mind, I'd say you then figure out how you want to address that point.
Okay, I'd like to also point out this second paragraph, which is the last paragraph of Mr. Young's letter. It reads, "The road district will work with the developer to license the use of the right of way property if the vacation cannot be completed in time for the development of the subject property by Children's Creative Corner." So, um, so coming back to the second, second relief that we're seeking. So like Mr. Chair stated, this re, uh, this relief of the side yard setback from thirty feet to one feet would automatically be addressed with this letter, one way or the other. The third and the last.
Alain.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I don't, unless I misunderstood you, you think that letter clears up the, the request for the need for a variation or that it should be granted just on that letter?
I believe so.
Okay.
Okay, I will proceed. So the third variation is to re, uh, reduce the front yard setback of the new company sign from fifteen feet to approximately ten feet. Uh, which you know is with this, with the heavy landscaping in front of the Naperville Country Club, yet immediately to the west of the property. And a relatively shallow building setback of the Naperville Pump Station, that's immediately to the east of the subject property. We feel that, you know, we should take advantage of a five foot and moving the, the sign towards the Chicago Avenue by five more feet to make the sign more prominent so that, you know, the, the future patrons wouldn't miss it. Um, and we also, we also feel that the, the sign, we also understand the sign, what we designed based on the totally following DuPage County's code, which is twenty-four square feet per side. And also with, uh, the maximum six feet from the top of the sign to the, to the grid. So if we're not touching on the fourth variance, which wasn't published until recently, I will, that will be all I, all I, all my presentation. I will pass it on to the owner, a future owner, to talk about the business and operation.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Renato Dole.
You're going to have to give to the microphone.
All right. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
My name is Renato Dole.
Too much sound to hear, sir?
R-E-N-A-T-O. Last name is Z is in zebra, O T is in Tom, A J is in Jackson. Our family owns Kids World that does business as Children's Creative Corner. That is located at twenty-seven ninety-three Maple Avenue in Lyle. Children's Creative Corner has been operating there for the past twenty-six years, was created since nineteen ninety-four. And our family took over, uh, the Kids World, the operation in two thousand and eleven. Uh, currently, it's, uh, been serving the Lyle and Naperville community for over twenty-five years. And they've had a lot of generation of kids go through and recognize that as the first place where they start to learn and, and grow. Children's Creative Corner is, uh, is licensed and is good standing by DCMS. It also holds a license from DuPage County County. Currently, it's licensed for hundred and twenty-four kids. Uh, and they are distributed in seven classrooms. There are two classrooms for infants, one classroom for toddlers, one classroom of two-year-olds, one classroom of three-year-olds, and one classroom with four and five-year-olds. There is one classroom with before and after school students that usually come after their public school is finished. Uh, Children's Creative Corner has been operating successfully over many years. There have been some limitations due to the, the location and the position that is in, in a, uh, in a shopping plaza. First, there is limitation in the amount of the play area that we are already being started on the back of it. We have attached some pictures from the exhibit in there that you'll be able to reference under exhibit C. The narrative, you'll have the photos that are exhibited. So having that limitation on the play, on play area, it's, it's an important part of daily activities. And then it kind of limits the, to have it, to run it successfully. Over the years, we have tried and put all our efforts to combine it with other, uh, field trips that in nearby parks and all. It's not always the same as if we could have that in your backyard. Another challenge usually is, uh, we're in a shopping plaza and we have to share the the parking spaces with other businesses that are, or customers of other businesses that are in the plaza.
You know, not to interrupt you, I think suffice it to say your present site does not work. So I don't think we need much more on there.
Understandable, I was just about to, to wrap up, sir, on about that. So, uh, with all being said, uh, it will be very beneficial, we got very excited when we're able to, to show our interest on the property that we're referencing right now. Um, there are certain advantages, uh, that if we're to move that property due to the fact of having a larger play area. The proposed, uh, new location, the proposed center will still operate under Children's Creative Corner and will, will have similar operation in terms that first of all, it's only point seven miles east of the, west of current location. So we'll be able to serve the same community and maintain our existing families and continue to serve them and add additional ones. The new proposed childcare will be operating Monday through Friday from six thirty in the morning to six in the afternoon. Will be closed on the weekends. We're anticipating to have approximately about a hundred and fifty students in there. Though this number will be determined from the CFS after you're finished with the construction. They visit the property and they determine the square footage and including furniture in the classroom and, uh, like license you based on the age groups.
Let me ask you one thing.
Yes, sir.
I hope I don't throw you off. And I understand you're right, you're saying that you'll have a capacity of about a hundred and fifty children.
Up to no more than a hundred and fifty children.
You gave me an exhibit C that says that the DuPage County Health Department license allows a capacity of a hundred and twenty-four students.
The existing center, that's correct.
What is the license for the new center allowed, if you were to get it?
Well, uh, the way that it operates is that regardless of what you have your existing license, once you move the location, sir, you still have to be relicensed with a new facility.
I realize that, dear. Have you sought information on a new license?
Yes, sir.
And what is the capacity that a new license would allow if you were to get this site?
Well, the way it works is that the capacity will be determined at the time that somebody representative from DCFS comes to your center right after you're done with build out. The next visit is from DCFS. She comes in each classroom, observes what furniture you have in the classroom, what is the square footage of the classroom, what is the intended age group per classroom? And then determines if this classroom A will have infants, square footage per, per child is thirty-five square foot. Uh, and then you'll be allowed to have twelve infants in this classroom. The next classroom, they will have older kids. After she says that, you know, like, I'll have to do that to this shelf, so I can, I have to reduce the square footage. Then you'll be licensed for fifteen or twenty, whatever the case, so.
So you don't really know what's going to be granted?
Well, we know that you, we know the number of classrooms, could be a variance of number of students per classroom. That will be, we will take, uh, that's why I mentioned no more than a hundred and fifty, sorry, between a hundred and thirty-five and a hundred and fifty.
I just, you know, one of the things, when you're doing a conditional use, you're going to, we have the right to put various conditions on. We could put a condition of the number of students, but at this point, you don't know the number, you don't know what's going to be licensed.
Well, that's why we, we referenced it that, currently we're licensed for a hundred and twenty-four. And we referenced that we're going to, we planned to add one, on the current location, we have several classrooms. We had, we planned to add one more classroom on the new location. We're, we're assuming that we'll have between one thirty-five and one fifty, but no more than one fifty based on the structure of the building that we are, the preliminary, uh, drawing from that.
And are you going to submit the building plans to tonight, or do you? What is your proposal? You've now said you have exognotic classrooms. Are you going to show us how you're building this out or not?
I don't think we have architectural design yet at this point. Sorry, it was not in the package.
Do you think your hearing tonight is premature?
Well, as you, as we mentioned earlier, we haven't purchased the property. So we have done the, the drawing and the architecture of, of the building without specific square footage of each classroom. Uh, this was conditional purchase, so that's why we prepared as much as possible information to apply for the conditional use. We're advised that this information will be sufficient for the conditional use. That's why we presented the outline of the building without specific square footage of each classroom.
Now who advised you that you, this all was very insufficient?
It was our understanding with, uh, inquiry with, uh, with DuPage County's owner.
Did you get the packet too that tells you what you need to prove up to obtain a conditional use? And what you need to prove up to get a variance?
Yes.
Okay, then, proceed with your presentation.
So, uh, in the, the proposed location will be operating from six thirty to, to, uh, six possibly afternoon. The student will spend time during the day in the classroom and the outdoor area. The, the outside play area will be passed and then will be, uh, positioned in the north, uh, part of the property. So if I can reference it here, will be two playgrounds. One will, one will be for the younger students will be positioned in here and the other one will be positioned.
All right. Somehow you're going to have to describe that better, just, you're, we're doing a record.
Okay.
And when you say here and here, it does do it. Define it, it's east of something or south of something, however you want to do it.
Okay. The number one playground will be positioned right behind the existing structure of the building on the, on the north, north side of the building. The number two playground will be on parcel number two on the northeast side of it. Most of the, most of the landscape entries will be preserved and have attached to side development. There will be no food preparation in the building. The food will be, uh, delivered by a catering company prepared already. The food will be delivered, uh, somewhere between ten and eleven o'clock, uh, which is a time that, uh, drop off of the childrens have already passed and it doesn't interfere with parents dropping in their children. The catering company utilizes, uh, normal small minivan to do their delivery, uh, of the hot lunches. Drop off and pick up. Parents will be dropping off in the morning at their convenience and pick up their children when they are available in the afternoon. The older students will be picked up from nearby public schools by a minivan or minibus that is operated from Children's Creative Corner. Parents will be utilizing, uh, the, the new entrance from Chicago Avenue and will be, uh, to the, which will be positioned in the east side of the property. As we're currently operating at, uh, at the existing location, we have been monitoring closely, uh, our current parents' arrival and departure information. Um, it's very important to mention and emphasize in here that uh, the parents' arrival in the morning is a constant flow and it's staggered from six forty-five till about nine forty-five. So around six thirty, six forty-five, we have a few new parents arriving in that slowly during that timeframe, depending on where they work or where they live and all that, so.
That's not a set time, though.
It's not a set time, we don't have a set time for them to drop, and they do drop the children at their own, uh, convenience.
What prevents them from all coming at six thirty?
Well, based on the operating for the past ten years, none of them, there are multiple reasons. Some of the childrens are not ready in, uh, enough in six thirty to arrive at the daycare. Um, the only few families that will arrive at six thirty, those families where the parents work far enough that they have to drop the children or start very early work. And over the years, we have seen that there are, uh, limited two, three families. The same thing could be mentioned, uh, for the pickup. Um, the, there's various and it's staggered, uh, somewhere in, in the time between three, uh, and, and sixteen that we closed. So some families, like, we have quite a few parents that are teachers, when they finish, uh, on the public school, they come and pick up their children. Others work further or depending on, on their circumstances. What is important and the reason why I'm mentioning that is to emphasize that in the difference from a public school where the school starts at the same time and finishes at the same time and parents align out to pick up or drop off their kids at the exact time, in the morning or in the afternoon, our flow, our, uh, flow here is staggered and doesn't come all at once. At our current location, we have only four parking spots that are assigned to our daycare on the, uh, shopping plaza and that has been operating still okay without any, any issues on the past. Uh, at least ten years that we're operating. So that's why, uh, we feel that that's important, the impact. So that's why, uh, we feel that that's important, the impact on, on the trap and all that will be, uh, there. Moving, and as a, as a final remarks, I wanted to say that moving, uh, to this new facility will be great benefit to. The families and children of the community will be able to have, uh, larger play area, more room space. Also be able to be engaged in nature activities and observe more and all that, which are some of the things that were not available at your current location. So that will conclude my, uh, narrative presentation.
Um, can I, can I take another five minutes of your time to talk about the site design? Uh, that I intended to, to present at the beginning of the presentation, so.
It's your presentation, you put in whatever you want.
Understand.
And moving up, conditional use to variation, and then you'll. Get the next year and prove up the third variation you're asking for.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, so the entire property covers two parcels, parcel one, parcel two. Parcel one covers the area of parcel one, zero point three-nine acre. The area of parcel two is one point one-four acre, so the total of the acreage will be. One point five-three acre for the entire property. And for this proposed, the scope of the proposed improvements, as you can see, this is the existing building. So we're keeping the existing building and we're putting in addition to the east and to the north. So these are the new building, this is the existing building. In addition to the existing building addition, the, our scope of the improvement will include the new parking lots in the front. An additional parking lot on the west for the employees. And the treasure enclosure. Just behind the existing frame garage, which will turn into a future gym, and it will be one more spaces, uh, for the parking. Uh, from a stormwater drainage standpoint, we will definitely, during a. A final engineering stage, we'll be following DuPage County Stormwater Management ordinance. And one of the things that we have already addressed is what we call PCBMP, Post-Construction Best Management Practice. Because the net new impervious area that we will be generating for the development exceeds the threshold. Uh. For the PCBMP, uh, based on the county code, so we are. Proposing two dry well in the backyard where the lower point of the property is. Uh, to, to absorb the runoff from the additional. Additional impervious area. From a. So utility connection standpoint, I'd like to make the correction from staff report. The current property is serviced by an existing sanitary and water service that's owned by neighbor. The, the main is owned by Naperville, but where, the existing building is serviced by existing sanitary and water service. That connects to the Naperville's mains. And we'd like to take advantage of that, so there will be no septic field under the proposed condition. Uh, we're, we're planning on using the existing sanitary and water service.
Have you tapped in yet?
Yes.
Jessica, why did this show well and septic that are on, uh, sewer and water?
That was just an error, it's water and sewer. That was just an error, it's water and sewer.
Okay.
Um, from a site grading standpoint, even though, you know, we're not in the final engineering stage, but we, actually, we started the site grading already. Uh, but regardless, we will make sure the site grading will be designed in such a way that. Uh, you know, no immediate neighbors will be adversely impacted. Again, this will be addressed in the final engineering stage. Uh, uh, one, one thing I failed to mention is, uh, as you can see from the engineer, uh, topographic survey, there is existing site entrance. Of, of, uh, Chicago Avenue on the southwest corner of the entire property. And as required by DUDAT. We are eliminating the access because, you know, from the engineering standpoint, it's. Always not a good idea to mix the stop sign control access with the signalized. Intersection at the same location, so we are eliminating the existing access point and. We do propose a new access point for the proposed site, and that will be further east from the existing entrance. And this access, this new access will be. It's restricted access called right in and right out, so in other words, only the parents coming from the, you know, from the east, they can only turn in to the right. And only. The parents that leave the site. I'm sorry, the, the parents that leave the site can only turn right. Instead of left when they leave this site. As far as lighting goes, uh, that will also be addressed in the final engineering stage, but. We will definitely close follow. DuPage County's requirement that is zero point five-foot candles, no more than zero point five-foot candles at the property lots. And that's pretty much what I have for the site design, thank you.
Okay, so you're gonna follow the candle. But you don't know where you're putting the lighting, you don't have a definitive. Drawing of how the building is gonna be situated. Things of that nature, do you have a, a flow pattern on the parking lot? And on the. It, it looks like you have a parking, and then transcends to a parking lot and then off the driveway to something else, do you have a flow pattern or anything else?
At this point, no.
Has this proposal been shown to the fire department to see if this gives them adequate access to address any fire or urgency situations on the property?
From my understanding, other than, the, DuPage County zoning staff presented to the fire department, no, we did not. Contact, we have not reached out to fire department yet.
And, and then I happened to look at the, the traffic. About from your old building. And it, I just did a quick adding, but it doesn't add up to one hundred and twenty-five or one hundred and twenty-eight, whatever you had, and now you're going to one hundred and fifty. Uh, how are you going to show us that this will not overly burden, um, the area, the traffic going in and out?
Well, that's the idea of having a right-in, right-out tra, uh, entrance, that means. Having a right-in, right-out entrance would not impact the existing traffic flow that's currently flowing on Chicago Avenue.
So if you have the element, let's, let's say you proved up that the, that doesn't. Struck the flow. How does it impact the quantity of cars on that roadway each day? I'd tell me.
I just, uh, I wanted to add that since we are, right now, we're located zero point seven miles west of this existing property. Uh, so, and our exit and pick the way people come in and out of our existing daycare is on Chicago Avenue. So a lot of this, uh, traffic that already comes to our, uh, daycare will come to this new one as well. Uh, probably most of the families will join us at the new location. So these are families that are already driving on Chicago Avenue to come to our existing location. They're about zero point six or zero point seven miles away from it. But, uh, from the total number of, of cars, I don't think there's gonna be a big difference. Uh, also, what you're seeing there, that the total number doesn't add to one hundred and twenty-seven is because. Have we been in the location for about ten years, we've never been full, full to the point that every spot is taken. Uh, and there's many factors for it, so, um, the chances that, uh, you know, it will be one hundred and fifty is are very, very slim. Um, and also, we have many families, about twenty-five percent or so, that are siblings. So they drive together with one car and drive out with, with one car as well, and that impacted, we, uh, we, we even have families that have three siblings living around. And, uh, so, um, that's, that's why that number is really never gonna be a hundred and fifty. And, uh, what my brother was explaining a little bit earlier, the number would be one thirty-five and one, uh, and one hundred and fifty. The way why the number is fluctuating is because we are adding one more classroom. And based on the needs of your business, that lesson can be with infants, which you can have up to twelve, no more than twelve, uh, babies in the room. Or it can be with four, five-year-olds, you can have up to twenty. So that's why the number, based on the, how the business goes and the needs, you discuss with DCFS and say, I would like this room for now to be for infants. And then she will move that number down by eight, or if you say from infants, I wanna switch to three, four-year-olds, then she will change the total number up by, uh, you know, by, by eight again. So that's why it's kind of a fluctuating, uh, fluctuating number. But because of current families, I'll let you drive in on Chicago Avenue, we think the impact will be pretty small. And while we don't have, and, and we apologize, we didn't think we, we needed to put the layout of all the classrooms. Um, I do have another one, and I have about four, about copies, um, that, uh, that shows a little bit more detailed layout of the classrooms. And, and the bathrooms and, and that kind of thing within the building. Uh, but again, if, if you would like, I can try to vest these few copies that I have, I apologize, I didn't think we, we thought that that. Out, outside layout of the building will be sufficient.
You don't need any type of zoning? For the buildings you're planning to put on?
Any zoning change?
Yes.
Uh, no, to our, to our knowledge, no, because it's already being used as, as an office. Uh, as of now.
And the variance request that was recently published is for that front parking lot that you're proposing to add?
Correct. Um, right now, the building, as you can see, the existing building is right here, if you add this extension. This existing building is right here, and it goes all the way to somewhere here. Uh, their existing parking lot is, it's in the front of the building, and we will need a few more spots, so we need to add one to the, you know, to the other side as well. So turning into two rows of parkings instead of just one. Um, this is already the, the unit has about four or five spots, and we are looking to add three more, three more to that, this will be for employees only. And the front one will be mostly for.
Do you need a variance for the existing driveway and parking area?
For the, for the existing one that's right now?
Yes.
No, we don't, because while the existing one is only using this side. And now, and that's the new variance that was added, we're gonna need to use this side, and we didn't realize it, because it's parking. And it's going to a few closer, we still need a variance for that side of the parking as well. Allow me to clarify.
Excuse me, can you, uh, state inside your name, please, sir?
I apologize, um, my name is Tony Zota, who is a streetcar, K-L-I-T-R, the last name is Zota, Z-O-T-A-J.
Thank you.
Thank you. So to address Mr. Chair's question about the fourth. Variance, uh, the variance was actually. To vary the, the parking lot setback in the front yard from thirty feet per zoning code to five feet. That was the recently published zoning.
All right, move into that one, we can.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna clarify my own mind.
We believe, we believe we've covered most of it, and, um. Yeah, again, I, I do have another copy, if people like to take a look at the more layout, and I apologize, we can, uh. And again, I will apologize, this is our first time, so, but we, we're understanding how, uh, some of these variants work.
No, I, we're not, since we're not weighing in on the building, then I don't think we need to, we shouldn't muddy the record. Um. It may be part of your argument that that's why certain things have, I'm assuming, we'll get to it when we get to the parking lot, but there's maybe a reason why you have to have the parking lot there.
Sure.
Now, let's not do that till it's properly published there in front of us.
Okay.
Um. Does anybody wish to address the standards for variances? You're gonna help them, all right, let's, where you at, you can be with us.
I just wanted to make some comments, well, some of my things I don't.
When we open it up, keep your, doing your presentation.
All right, sorry. Mr. Chair, to answer your question, no, I should have been more prepared, but, uh, we only follow, we only know about these three variants, but as far as where. What section of the zoning code came from, I, I didn't.
No, I'm not saying that, the Masell standards for variances. It, that's in our directions. You, it, it's a very laid out what you need to prove up. Okay, I, it's your presentation, I, 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 we've been told we can't make presentation by the, the federal government, so. I had to draw some stuff out, but it's, it's your presentation. You have the floor, uh, anything else you wanna do?
That's all for me.
Okay, we're gonna come back. For the parking lot. And all these people here from the audience, I'm gonna. What we normally do is, everybody has a right to ask questions or make comments. We usually limit you to one bite of the apple. Your presentation isn't fixed, so you can go ahead tonight, if you're. Wanna do it and do your question or your comments. And then you may not have another bite of the apple. Question's a little bit different than comments. So having said that, is there anybody that feels the need to proceed tonight? Yeah, these are all open meetings. So let me, what we're going to do is our next opening for a meeting is October fourteenth. It'll be in this room at six o'clock P.M. At that point. We will address the last published variation. And then when the petitioner rests, then we will open it up to comments from the public. If you have a specific question tonight, we will entertain the question. But if you wanna comment, that's, you can do that too. Does anybody wanna comment at this stage? What do you wanna do?
I don't know, but my name is Roger Sheffield, my wife Patricia. Our property is completely along the back, a proposed property. We're, we're attached, we're on the side of the Olson Way also. Entire back part, which will be fenced. And here are the playback playground there. And I just wanna say, just to get on the record, how irritated I was.
Well, this is your bite of the apple, you're not asking a question. You wanna make a comment, this will be your night, and you, you, you'll have, since you're probably only about five minutes. Say what you want, but then you won't have another bite, to see if you have to understand it.
All right, let me ask some questions.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't understand the dry well concept. Why are two dry wells needed in addition to the regular plumbing? I didn't quite understand what you're trying to say.
Can I answer? Yeah, the, the triwell is actually. Uh, a hole that you excavate, and then you put in a filter fabric, and then you dump in the, the gravel. Before you backfill it, and, and we, the idea is to run. The dump spouts and some of the, and also some of the yard inlet, which collects the runoff. And convey it via underground piping and dump it into the gravel.
So there's only rainwater?
The, the idea of the dry well is to let the water sit there and dissipate into the ground slowly and discharge the groundwater. It's, it's rainwater, yes, yes.
And just for the record. The county of DuPage has the toughest stormwater rules that I know in this area. Their obligation is they cannot increase any flow of water off their property. So they'll be closely monitored for that. How they get to it is somewhat their own decision on what they set up. But do you understand that?
Yeah, for, for. Second, secondly, still, say something. Second would be the lighting, obviously, is very important to us, long as down there, because it will.
All right, but that's not a question. You're, you're getting into, you're getting, and you're gonna, then you're gonna worry this, love that lighting clauses. If you wanna ask, make your statements that you're concerned about all that, here's your chance, this is your bite of the apple, and when you come back the next time, you won't be talking.
Won't be talking next time?
Yeah, you, you, everybody has one chance. So do you wanna make your comments now, or do you wanna make them after you heard the entire presentation?
I'll wait till I hear the presentation.
All right, having heard that, you, now you're turning. All right. Having heard that, you, now you're attorney for?
I'm the attorney for the attorney of the property.
Okay.
So not the petitioner, we are the contract seller.
Okay. And you're just monitoring that, you know, probably. So right, okay. All right, then at this point, this part of the hearing. Okay. You're gonna have to speak up. We have people on the, on there and.
And state your name, please.
Uh, Louis Wilson.
Why don't you go up here? Because we've got two members that I know can't hear it because I have a, I can't hear you right here.
Uh, my name is Louis Wilson and I'm one of the neighbors, obviously, a couple of doors down. Uh, but I, I would like to know if you have seriously looked at the, uh, arrangements for parking, drop off, stacking, how long a drop off takes, how much dedicated space there is for drop offs, how things work in the parking lot while somebody's dropping, somebody's waiting to pick up, you know, how, how these things are all accommodated. So I, I guess it's, I don't know if it's a yes or no question, but.
Well, if it's a yes or no, that's not good for you. Cause everybody's saying, yes, we considered it.
Yeah, but, but.
Well, all right, you know, that was somewhat, I, what I was getting to, that's why I thought your presentation needed to be drawn out. Um, so you, you have, he, he asked questions, you gotta write the answer and as you go along, you want to keep answering questions. It's your chance, you can make your presentation for it. Go ahead and answer it. They have a duty to do it. Now you, you've asked them to answer something that I asked that didn't have an answer in there. So there's two things in it when you do a case. You, you have the duty to present your elements and prove it up. Failure to do it costs you approval.
Um, to, to answer that, that question, I just clarified a bit more about the park.
You know what? Let me think about one thing. This is about the front parking lot, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's not really in front of us. Why don't you mark that question? We'll remember that question, mark it down. When we come back and we hear the testimony and hold on that, they will have the chance to address that question. But I don't want, it shouldn't be in the record yet because it's not formally in front of us.
I understand. Sure. Thank you.
All right, then at this point, the hearing will be continued to October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Does any board member have any question that you feel the need to have answered right now?
Oh.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I have something. Um, I'm not gonna ask any questions. I, generally, the presentation was a little, uh, vague. Um, and so I really want to pay careful attention uh, and perhaps review the transcript and I'd like an opportunity to do that before the next hearing. So could I just request that the, uh, transcript be made available before the, uh, next, before the next hearing commences?
Yes.
Yes, you want an expedited copy, Bob?
No, just, I mean, uh, the next hearing, I understand to be the fourteenth?
Yes. I told you.
It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be expedited.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I think we usually get on ahead of time, but let's get that a week ahead of time.
Okay.
Uh, and then you guys want copies or you want copies, make it, you know, to talk to the board for it. She can, uh, you can work that out. Yeah, I will close there. Nothing else. So we're adjourned to October fourteenth to revisit the requests that we have and to go over the last variation that has been published and will be in front of us at that point.
Side exhibit A B, can we bring in more details that.
You can do whatever you want in your presentation. Uh, read the handouts you got from the county. Uh, you've heard it from me, you've heard it from the chairman who's not here tonight. The presentation was vague. There are elements that are needed to be proved to get conditional use. There are elements needed to be proved to get variance. Variances are more strict, require more proof because they run with the land. In the interim, we have a little time to deal with the road commissioner if that is a non-entity. It makes it easier. But that's, depends on what comes of that. Having said that, then we will adjourn to October fourteenth at six P M in this room for this case.